Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Meeting for Monday, November the 21st. We would like to say welcome and I will call the meeting to order. Tonight, the following junior ROTC cadets and the color guard will be presented for our opening ceremonies. I would like to recognize J.M. Robinson High School's Air Force Junior ROTC commanding the color guard is Cadet Second Lieutenant Martez Coleman, carrying the US flag. Cadet First Lieutenant Ben Williams is carrying the North Carolina flag. Cadet Second Lieutenant Jonathan McBride and Cadet Master Sergeant Kashaw Patel are guarding the colors. Our AF Junior ROTC Aerospace Science Instructor accompanying the cadets is Mr. Wayne Outrum, Master Sergeant. Please rise. And thank you to the J.M. Robinson Junior ROTC program out there. We're so proud of all of our ROTC units that perform all of our opening ceremonies. Board members, may I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented? At this time, I would also like to note that Dr. Colleen Sane, I think I actually would like to do a correction in the agenda. Dr. Colleen Sane has asked that we pull the approval for the future core subject that we placed on the consent agenda at our work session. This is asked to be pulled. Would you like to explain that, right?
Yes, I would be glad to. We received some information two days after we put it on consent agenda and the information contradicted some information we had been given earlier. We do not need to change our graduation rate, our graduation requirements. What we do need to do is make some adjustments in our cluster groupings, so that will not require any responsibility from the board and I apologize for taking your time.
Thank you very much. So, we will pull that item from the consent agenda without any further discussion. It will not be tabled. That will just be completely pulled. Are there any other discussion items for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Were we not going to pull the study, the salary study, off of the consent agenda?
I need for somebody to actually make that motion.
Ms. Carpenter, was she going to make that motion?
Okay, I'd like to have it pulled.
Like to have the salary study pulled off the consent agenda.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. I will place this under our action agenda item and make it 8.2. Hearing that, may I have a motion that the amended agenda be approved as presented?
Say, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. We will move down now to 3.1 and if everyone will bear with us, I know we have new people in the audience. We are paperless, so we are moving through computers. We will begin with our Impact Through Education Awards. Two students, a teacher and a support person from a school are selected to receive the Impact Through Education Awards, for exemplifying the qualities of initiative, hard work and respect for others. Two schools are recognized each month to provide an opportunity for more recognitions during our school year. Mrs. Ronnie Boone, our Public Relations Director, is here tonight. She will be recognizing students and staff from Carl A. Fur Elementary School and Hickory Ridge High School. Ms. Boone?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to begin tonight with Carl A. Fur Elementary School and at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the administrative team from Carl A. Fur to please come forward. Stand on the tape right there. Thank you. Our first honoree from Carl A. Fur Elementary School is Paige Hamilton. Would Paige and her family please come forward? Paige Hamilton is the type of student most teachers dream of having in their classes. She is respectful and responsible and a pleasure to teach. She is a well-rounded student and in fact, her academics match her behaviors. Paige is the type of student who can put a smile on her teacher's face while the rest of the class is chaotic. She is a model classmate and is always willing to help others in any way possible. She attends Bible school on Wednesday evenings with her neighborhood friends and really enjoys the fellowship. Paige has volunteered at numerous athletic events and can be found reading books, drawing or spending time with friends on the weekend. Paige makes a positive impact every day at Fur Elementary and we congratulate her on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our second honoree from Fur Elementary is Erin Bennett. Would Erin and his family please come forward? Erin is a fifth grade student at Carl A. Fur Elementary. Erin strives for excellence both in and out of the classroom. He always has a wonderful attitude about what he's learning. He is a leader by example and shows respect and compassion for others freely. He will happily help anyone in need and always works well with others, leading them to complete tasks accurately and in a timely manner. His parents are especially proud as they watch him grow into a strong Christian. Everyone knows him, everyone who knows him expects great things to come. Congratulations Erin on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Carl A. Fur Elementary School. Our next honoree this evening is Mrs. Suzanne Borless. Would Mrs. Borless and her family please come forward? That's fine. Mrs. Borless is the first person to greet guests at Carl A. Fur Elementary School and always leaves a positive impression with all visitors. She manages the office all day long with the ability to multitask, answering the phones, handling emergencies with confidence and calmness, completing clerical tasks and more. She is a great communicator. She knows the staff so well that she always goes the extra mile to make staff members feel valued and appreciated. She is noted for being consistently upbeat each day no matter what the day brings or how hard her day is. Mrs. Borless is married to Danny and they have nineteen-year-old twins who graduated from J.M. Robinson High School in 2010. They are both currently in their second year of college here in North Carolina. Their daughter Brooke is a North Carolina Teaching Fellow. Mrs. Borless enjoys walking, hiking and any type of outdoor activities. Congratulations, Mrs. Borless, and thank you for making an impact on education at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. And our final honoree from Carl A. Fur Elementary School this evening is Mrs. Anna Taylor. Would Mrs. Taylor and her family please come forward? Anna Taylor is a lead teacher at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. She is dedicated to working with students and teachers to make sure all students learn to read. Mrs. Taylor is a leader in RTI, ensuring that students are provided the right intervention needed to learn. She is valued by staff members for her knowledge and expertise. She is well-known for her endless patience and kindness. Her colleagues say they all have something to learn from her. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor, for making a positive impact through education at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. Now, we will honor our honorees from Hickory Ridge High School. I'd like to invite any members of the Hickory Ridge High School Administrative Team to please come forward. Our first honoree from Hickory Ridge High School this evening is Taylor Haynes. Would Taylor and her family please come forward? Taylor is a senior at Hickory Ridge High School. Throughout her high school career, she has been involved in student council, leadership and many other extracurricular activities. Through these clubs, she has helped plan events around her school. Taylor is well-known and is a positive role model for students at Hickory Ridge High School. After graduation, she hopes to attend the University of South Carolina to study biology. Congratulations, Taylor, for making a positive impact on education every day at Hickory Ridge High School. Our next Hickory Ridge High School honoree is Tyler Stevenson. Would Tyler and his family please come forward? Tyler is also a senior at Hickory Ridge High School. He prides himself on being involved in the community through student council, leadership and Beta Club. As student body treasurer, Ty strives to make sure that the students are as happy as possible. During his free time, he spends time at work coaching middle school sports and partaking in track and competitive cheerleading. After high school, he hopes to attend the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill or the University of Georgia to major in education. Congratulations, Ty, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Hickory Ridge High School. Our next Impact Through Education Award honoree is Mrs. Susan Clark. Would Mrs. Clark and her family please come forward? Susan Clark is a behavioral management technician at Hickory Ridge High School. She's been with Cabarrus County Schools for ten years. She began her work at Central Cabarrus before moving to help open Hickory Ridge High School in 2007. She's married and has two children and a grandson who is the apple of her eye. She has a very unique relationship with students and always has their best interest at heart. Students may receive disciplinary consequences, but they are always delivered with compassion and in return, the students trust and respect her. They show up in her office after graduation just to thank her for helping to steer them on the right path. Congratulations, Mrs. Clark, for making an impact through education at Hickory Ridge High School. And our final Impact Through Education Award recipient this evening is Mrs. Wendy Tomberlin. Would Mrs. Tomberlin and her family please come forward? Wendy Tomberlin is a technology facilitator at Hickory Ridge High School. She has a mathematics degree from Appalachian State University and has gone on to achieve her master's degree in instructional systems technology as well as National Board Certification. Wendy is definitely a catalyst for integrating innovative methods of teaching and learning at Hickory Ridge and she encourages and supports teachers in changing the way they deliver instruction. She was instrumental in the placement of smart boards and other 21st century tools in all classrooms at Hickory Ridge when it opened five years ago. Well, yeah, five years ago, sorry. Wendy continues to lead students and staff in incorporating emerging technologies into the school environment. We are proud to recognize Mrs. Tomberlin as an Impact Through Education Award recipient for Hickory Ridge High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations once again to all the recipients. At this point in time, if you would like to exit out the right side unless you just want to stay here for our business meeting tonight, we are perfectly okay with that. So, I'll give you just a few minutes if you would like to take that opportunity now. Next, board members, we're going to move to your 3.2. This is a recognition of outstanding graduation rate award to Cox Mill High School. And before I ask Dr. Shepherd and Principal Todd Smith, I also would like the Executive Director of School Operations, Chris Louder, and the graduation, or the dropout prevention coordinator, Mr. Jesse Smith, if they are here tonight, to please come to the podium. I want to read a couple of comments. This is something that the board has talked about almost every year, every conversation we have, whether we're talking about budgets or curriculum. No matter what the topic of conversation is, dropout is one of our priorities. So, this award is very special tonight, so I want to make sure that my comments are complete and accurate. I also wish that we had Principal Lynn Reimer available tonight because I think it's very appropriate for us to recognize that as much as we all hear that was stated by a board member and pointed out to us, the ninth grade and tenth grade years are the foundation and the initial academic success road for dropout. And these students were 100% redistrict from Northwest Cabarrus High School that went to Cox Mill. That foundation was laid for the award that was received and Todd Smith took that and went with it. And as much as we hear about the impact that redistricting has on kids, what it does to them in their high school years, I think this speaks volumes to no matter what takes place with redistricting when they have a structural support system in the beginning and towards the end, this is what we end up with. So, with that being said, I want to give you an idea of what happened. State Superintendent June Atkinson, Lieutenant Governor Walter Dalton and State Board of Education Chairman Bill Harrison recognized ten North Carolina school districts and thirty-two high schools for having the highest four-year cohort graduation rate in the state in the 2010-2011 school year. Cox Mill High School was recognized for having one of the highest graduation rates for the student population between 200 and 299 cohort. The four-year cohort graduation rate refers to the percentage of students who graduate from high school in four years or less. The rates are for the students who are identified as being in the graduating class of 2011. Cox Mill High School was honored recently at a special recognition luncheon in Raleigh for its outstanding graduation rate of 97.6%. And this is something that I think we all should be quite proud of and at this point in time, I would like to ask those people that I just named to join me at the podium, please. Mr. Smith, on behalf of the Cabarrus County Board of Education, it is my honor and privilege to present to you the Outstanding Graduation Rate plaque that we received that evening and we want to tell you how positively proud we are with what you took for the redistricting that took place with Northwest Cabarrus High School and what you did with that and for what you did for these students and I'm sure Dr. Shepherd would like to make a comment as well.
If I could just add to those words of congratulations, how much it means to me that our schools are recognized for something like this and I want to thank all of you gentlemen for the good work that you've done and plus, I add to that the words of congratulations for those that were working with them from the ninth grade forward at Northwest. So, thank you very much.
Next, board members, we will move to your 3.3, which is the presentation of donation to Cabarrus County Schools by Community Blood Center and we will have Mr. Adam Everhart and Mrs. Ronnie Boone to the podium, please.
Members of the board, if I may, a quick presentation for those of you that are unfamiliar with the Community Blood Center. We are the local nonprofit blood bank here in the area. We are the sole blood supplier to Cabarrus County. The mission of CBCC, as it states, is to be a steward of a community resource, life-saving blood. CBCC collects blood from the community to return it to the same community at the lowest possible cost consistent with the highest standards of quality. We collect blood from houses of worship, businesses, retailers, civic groups as well as high schools. Our vision is to build and strengthen the bonds of community and we do this through giving back. A portion of what we bring in every month is given back to the community that we receive it in. Various months, January and February, for example, we have a promotion called Pints for Pounds where we partner with the Second Harvest Food Bank and for every pint of blood that we collect, we'll donate six pounds in return to that community. Our promotion for August and September was titled Pints for Pencils and this program was geared to give back to our schools. Our high school students are such a joy to be around, especially for me, and I can't say thank you enough for allowing us to come into your school system and to be a part of the educational process. Just some quick notes on this, our high school students are so important to us that we try to give back as often as we can. That's why at every high school blood drive, every student that donates is given either free breakfast or free lunch and a free tee-shirt at the time of their donation. Every school that holds a blood drive with CBCC is entered into one of ten $1,000 grants for that school and any school that holds a blood drive twice a year with CBCC is awarded an automatic $500 scholarship for one of their students. Just last year, we awarded the Cabarrus County School System over $5,000 in grants and scholarships and a round of applause for your students on that. We are currently working with Ale Brown, Concord High School, Cox Mill, Hickory Ridge, Mount Pleasant and Northwest. With your support and help, we would like to be able to extend all of these benefits to the high schools system-wide. But, back to Pints for Pencils, it is with great honor that I present this check to the Cabarrus County School System to further the great educational needs of our community. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Everhart, for being here tonight with us. Board members, we will move to 3.4, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Recognition. We will have Mr. Jason Van Hukelum to the podium, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight, we are going to recognize six of our Cabarrus County Schools who have recently received recognition from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for their Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Initiatives, or PBIS. Before we do that, however, I'd first like to recognize our RTI PBIS Coordinator, Ms. Beth Cobb. Ms. Beth Cobb works with our schools in making sure that they have implementation success with RTI and PBIS. If Ms. Cobb would come to the front and stand here as we introduce our schools, you can take your picture. First, PBIS is a team-based problem-solving First, PBIS is a team-based problem-solving approach for looking at schools' data, practices, and systems for school climate and behavioral social instruction. Schools implementing PBIS ensure that research-based strategies are employed across the school to improve student academic outcomes, student engagement, and student motivation. Special effort is given to teaching students the social skills necessary to succeed in their educational environment and in life. We have three levels of awards tonight. Our highest award goes to our Brown McAllister Elementary School for receiving exemplar status. An exemplar PBIS school have completed requirements for the Green Ribbon and the Model Schools and have completed all three training modules. They have scored a level three or higher on the implementation inventory and 95% total on the SET, which is a research-validated instrument designed to assess and evaluate critical features of the school-wide PBIS. Exemplar schools also have at least two consecutive years of required behavioral attendance and academic data that show improvement, and they have documented at least one additional data element that indicates they are tracking as a team. At this time, I'd like Dr. Mason Miller, Jean Wilkins, and Susan Schaefer to come forward for our Brown to be recognized. Suzanne, I'm sorry. Suzanne Schaefer. Our second school for recognition is Beverly Hills Elementary School, which has achieved model status. Model PBIS schools have completed all the requirements for Green Ribbon schools and have completed Module Two training. They also have achieved a Level Two on the implementation inventory and a 90% total on the SET score. From Beverly Hills, if Marcy Beard, Trish Scardina, and Carol Lee Barber would come forward, please. Let's give them a round of applause. Finally, we have four Green Ribbon status schools. Those are AT Allen, Bethel, Weincoff, and Wolf Meadow. A Green Ribbon school has completed Module One training and has begun the PBIS implementation. They have attained at least a Level One on the implementation inventory and an 80% total on the SET. Let's start with AT Allen School of Hilda Bats, and her team members, please come forward. And another Green Ribbon status school is Bethel Elementary. From Bethel, we have Kristy Williford and Dana Wilson, if you guys would come forward. Nice shirts.
Thanks.
Yes. Very good. Let's give them a round of applause. And our third Green Ribbon status school is Weincoff Elementary. Michael Kelly and Brittany McMillan, please come forward. Let's give them a round of applause. And last but not least, our last Green Ribbon status school is Wolf Meadow Elementary School. And we'd like Dr. Adam Arbach and Robert Reichter to come forward.
Okay, board members, we will move to 3.5. This is the Wildlife Habitat Site Certification from National Wildlife Federation for Harris Road Middle School. We'll have Dr. Colleen Sane.
I'd like to invite Mrs. Heather Ayers and students, Mr. Philip Johnson, Ms. Therese UG, and if Mr. Little isn't here tonight, I'd like to invite him. Mrs. Ayers, former teacher at Harris Road Middle School and current teacher at Harold Winkler Middle School, created a garden and natural habitat area at Harris Road Middle School, excuse me. The area has been recognized by the National Wildlife Federation as a certified wildlife habitat. Mrs. Ayers and her students, several of whom I thought might have come tonight, worked on the garden area. The National Wildlife Federation's mission is to inspire Americans to protect wildlife for our children's future. Wildlife's ability to survive the global challenges of the 21st century is becoming outpaced by the events that are transforming our world. Global warming, the loss of habitat, and people are becoming more disconnected from nature than past generations are converging on a dangerous path for our planet. The work of the National Wildlife Federation and its affiliates across the country provides answers to these challenges and will help ensure America's wildlife legacy continues for future generations. And I'd like to thank them for that. Mrs. Ayers?
Okay, board members, we will now move to the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the October 3, 2011 work session, the meetings of the October 10, 2011 business meeting, and the minutes of the October 22, 2011 board retreat to be approved. Do I hear any comments or any noted corrections, please? Comments or corrections?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 3, October 10, and October 22.
Have a motion. May I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. And next, we will move to reports. And 5.1 is the board chair, and at this point in time, I know the majority of you know that I have been out of town due to an illness in my family, and I want to take an opportunity, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board. There's probably a lot of you that are here tonight regarding the discussion that we'll be having on the IB and the MANNIC School conversations, and I just want to say thank you. There was no way we could have responded to all of those emails. I'm not even sure how we would have done it if we would have just divvied them up between us. But thank you so much to the general public and to those of you that sent emails on concerns and your support for those programs that we'll be discussing. We appreciate hearing from you. I told a couple of board members that sometimes you feel like people only get involved when it comes to redistricting. That's the one thing you know you're going to get a lot of emails about, but we really appreciate that you're out there and you're paying attention closely what's academically important to your children, not just when we redistrict or other areas that we have that are contingent discussions. So thank you very much. Also, I know that Principal Todd Smith has left, but because I would like to back up for just a moment, I wanted to make sure that people understood that that class, the award that was given tonight for that graduation rate, that class was the largest freshman class in the history of Cabarrus County Schools. So I also wanted to hats off to Todd Smith and his staff out there that took that challenge and not only met it but exceeded it for that award to be received, excuse me, for Cabarrus County. I'm also working off of a sore throat. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we gave a lot of recognition to Northwest tonight because of that redistricting challenge that took place, but we do not want to take away anything from Todd Smith and his staff that took that challenge, met it, and exceeded it, and were able to prepare those students for that successful award that we received. So thank you very much. And next, I would also like to have Board Member Cindy Fertinbaugh. She has a special presentation for Dr. Shepherd from her recent trip from China, so at this point in time, I will turn the mic over to her.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the past two weeks, I'm actually only back about 48 hours. I had the opportunity to visit China as a member of a global leaders delegation from North Carolina. I sincerely appreciate the Miriam and Robert Hayes Charitable Trust sponsorship, which enabled participation by myself and Todd Adams from the Kannapolis City School Board, along with, the Hayes Foundation did not fund the legislators, but there were a number of legislators that went in our 17-member group. I'll be giving a full report to the board at a future meeting, but did want to report two particular items tonight. First, on two separate evenings in China last week, which was morning here, I did a video Skype activity, and I didn't even tell you about that yet, Dr. Shepherd, I don't know if you've heard about that, but with Odell kindergarten classes, talking to four classes and all. The students were amazed that it was nighttime in China. I held my touchpad camera to the window, and they could see the city lights of Shanghai, and they just could not understand that concept of how it could be night somewhere else. I shared Chinese writing, showed them Chinese money and a dragon fruit, and I cut the dragon fruit while I was talking to them, and it's pink on the outside and white on the inside, and they just didn't get that at all. So it was kind of fun. The questions were very interesting, to say the least, including, did I take a shower? They just wanted to know if normal things happened in China, I guess. Secondly, we had an official visit to the Beijing Guizhong Zhongzhu Middle School to visit eighth-grade classes. As is customary in China, the principal presented a gift to me as a representative of the North Carolina delegation, and tonight I would like to present this gift of framed Chinese opera mass to Dr. Shepherd for the school system. So it's amazing it made it back in my suitcase in one piece. So you can use that here, give it to a school if you like. And there's also a book about Chinese-US diplomatic relations of 30 years, so that's in English and Chinese.
Thank you, Board Member Fertinbaugh. Okay, we are going to move to 5.2, and this is the Cabarrus County Schools 2010-2011 Annual Report, and we'll have Mrs. Ronnie Boone back to the podium, please.
You should be able to open a PDF document at your site. Is everyone there? We're good? Great. I'm pleased to present to you the 2010-2011 Cabarrus County Schools Annual Report. This year's theme is Yesterday, Today, Tomorrow. It is our look back at where we were three years ago when we started this journey with our strategic plan and how far we've come today, and sort of a harkening into the future for what will come. And we will unveil our annual report to the public on Wednesday of this week, and it is a 24-page online publication. It will be available to view online as an online magazine with actual page flips, and you can also download it as a PDF if you would like to print a copy and have a copy to curl up and read at your leisure. This edition of the annual report is our final installment on our report from our strategic plan that we started three years ago, and it updates our progress, our successes, and looks at our challenges. And we are excited to share this with you. We are focusing on each of our priority areas. We've included statistics and facts about our accomplishments, as well as short vignettes about the work that we've done over the years that are examples of those priority areas. Most of the photographs in there are photographs of our students and our staff involved in activities, and we're just very pleased to have this available and to share it with the public come Wednesday. Any questions?
Board members, comments or questions, and I will begin on Mr. Shu's side.
Ms. Boone, thanks for the effort that you put forward in this. You know, this is great. You know, the graphics, everybody that participated done a good job, and the strategic plan has got a meaning and a purpose, and I hope we can fulfill it. Thank you.
I have to peek over to Mr. Shu's to see this one, but at this particular time, it's not loaded online, but it looks very impressive, and I look forward to seeing it.
I'll just say ditto. I mean, I like all the data, obviously. I think it's an easy-to-read format, and hopefully we'll have a lot of public views on the website.
I'd just like to say congratulations on the job well done. It looks good. Thanks.
Ditto, I like it. Hopefully, too, I will have any hard copies available. I mean, most everybody has the internet, but it would be nice if we could have some hard copies for those people that do not have the internet.
Absolutely, and we are going to have a small print run for, just for that purpose, Ms. Carpenter. So those will not be ready on Wednesday, but we will have a small number of hard copies available.
Ditto, the other, I think, I liked the graphics in it. I loved the form. You did an excellent job, and the people involved in the same.
And at this point in time, our state board member, Kyger, will not be here with us tonight. I'm sure y'all figured that out by now, but he had a prior family commitment. But thank you once again as well. Everything that everyone else has said has covered it, and it looks great. The graphics look good. I'm sure this will give the general public a lot of information, so thank you for the hard work that went into it. At this point in time, we will move to 5.3, Superintendent Comments, and I will turn this over to Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'd like to say a few words...
In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'd like to say a few words of thanks to our community organizations for the support that they provided our schools this fall. I want to begin with ExxonMobil and the Probst Brothers distributors, who recently awarded 16 of our schools $500 grants each through their Education Alliance Grant Program. And we're very thankful for this support. Also, 10 of our elementary schools participated in the Reading, Put You on the Track to Victory Literacy Program. Over 2,500 of our students read more than 1.1 million minutes during the program's duration. Through this program, Dollar General and Unilever teamed up with the Speedway Children's Charities to provide our schools $25,000, as well as a set of NASCAR driver favorite books for each school's library. Congratulations to our students, and thank you to these organizations for their support of the Cabarrus County Schools. And last, the Cabarrus Performance Learning Center and communities and schools received recently grants from Verizon Wireless for $20,000 and the Cannon-Hayes Trust for $49,000. I wish to thank each of you for all that you've done to support our schools. I wish each of you a happy Thanksgiving and hope that you'll spend the holiday with friends and family who love and care about you deeply.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move to guest speakers. Guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of a board meeting by calling the board clerk by 12 o'clock noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. It should also be noted that the individuals addressing the board will be allowed up to three minutes individually and five minutes representing a group to make their presentations. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation to present information within that timeframe allotted. And we will have first to the podium, Deidra Wishan, who is representing the Cabarrus County Teachers Assistance. And Ms. Wishan, I will tell you that you do follow the guidelines of the five minutes. If it doesn't take you that long, that's perfectly fine, but you do have that a lot of time. And if you'll please key the mic.
Good evening. The value of teacher assistants. I'm here representing all teacher assistants, past, present, future children of Cabarrus County Schools. It takes a team to build a house, just like it takes a team to educate our children. If you look in the word "team," there's a T and an A. Teacher assistants are paired up with one, two, or more teachers. We work with all these teachers in a day. Our job includes having one or more DI groups a day, math, reading, and writers' workshops, PE assistant, help out in upper grades, covering classes for meetings, proctoring, handling sick children, behavior issues, double planning, RTI, morning and afternoon duties, duty-free lunch, clerical work, and anything else that is needed. TAs have to be very flexible because we have to adjust our schedules when we are caught upon. We now do all this in six hours with a smile on our face. But there is not enough time in a day to help all our teachers with one-on-one and with a group of children who needs the extra interventions in reading, math, or writing. We are a team, and we want what is best for our team. Cutting our hours and letting teacher assistants go has hurt financially, but it does not stop there. It has not only affected grades kindergarten through fifth, but the entire school staff. Exceptional teacher assistants being highly qualified are having more responsibilities because of reducing teacher ratio in the EC classroom. They're doing more of the teaching since one teacher is teaching grades kindergarten through fifth. This is not fair to the students because they deserve an education like everyone else, and it's not fair to the TAs. Teachers and staff are having to step up and do morning and afternoon duties when they can be preparing for the day to begin, the next-day lesson, or doing paperwork that is required by the county and state. They also should be teaching instead of checking homework, filing, copying, receiving money, and other clerical duties. Teacher assistants have done a lot of these responsibilities in the past, but we are unable to complete everything and work with children, too. Principals were given the number of TAs they would get for the school year. Then a decision had to be made based on what the principal and the other admin at the school felt was the most important way to utilize the TA. Some TAs come in early to do morning duties and then leave early. Then some TAs come in late and are there for the afternoon duties. Some principals felt that the best way to utilize us is to be there during instruction time only. Either way, students' instructional time and safety is affected. Parents are questioning TAs as why we get there late or leave early. They are shocked when we tell them we work only six hours. They know the school system received the money from the state for TAs, but did not realize the word "flexible" was in the budget and that the money was able to be used on other things. They have asked us, "Who is helping the teachers when you're not here?" We tell them, "No one." I personally had a parent who told me that she was glad that her daughter is not in kindergarten, first, or second grade. She said that the teacher assistants truly helped her child's learning. Schools are depending on volunteers to come in and help out. This is great, and schools love the help. But having the TAs in the building for eight hours is better for the students' education and safety. We, the TAs, know the students, the procedures, and will be there should emergency arise. We've had staff members telling us that they are worried about the students' test scores going down because the teacher assistants not able to help out more. Who are we going to put the blame on when we have more students below grade level in the near future? What are we going to tell the student who has a low self-esteem because he or she is below grade level and their friends are at or above grade level? What do we say to the parents who are upset because their child is not getting the extra help he or she needs? Surrounding counties have brought their teacher assistants back to eight hours a day. They realize that a TA is part of their team for helping educate the children. The children are innocent, and they deserve an education. I have always heard the success of a child's education starts in elementary school. Please bring us back to eight hours a day so we can help our team succeed in our children's education.
Thank you.
And we got, I've got packets that's got the speech in it. It also has hours, six hours early and late versus seven hours coming in early or late, and then eight hours. We also have about 16 TA schedules throughout Cabarrus County that they have sent in, and I've copied for you. I also have parents', teachers', and TAs' concerns. But it's hard on us when we leave, and we know that we could help that one child for another time.
Thank you, Ms. Wishan. We appreciate you being here tonight. Next, we will have Therese Uji, representing Harris Road Middle School, parents to the podium, please. Therese, will you key up, please?
Thank you for having me here again tonight. The last time I was here was seven months ago. It was in April where I brought you the pictures and the three-page list of the health and safety issues that were needed at Harris Road Middle School that we're still waiting to be done. Our school, as you know, was built in 2002, and it was not completed as far as the school grounds. As far as my update today, the update is nothing has been done that was on that list as of today's date. And I'm sorry to tell you that, but I do want to thank Holly Blackwelder, as well as Lynn Wiki, who has tried to put Harris Road at the top of the list, because we've been at the bottom of the list for getting things done for a long time, many years, in fact. We're still waiting for the handicap ramp to be redone. Nothing has been patched. The ADA supervisor came out, looked at it with also the facility supervisor from the school district, and indicated to me in a telephone call after his visit that it was installed incorrectly, which I already knew that. And they didn't retrofit it, and that's why it's sinking, it's wavy, it's breaking, it's cracking, as well as the sidewalk before it and after it. Literally, you can hurt yourself on the handicap ramp at Harris Road Middle School. Sorry to say that, but it is true. And some of our students who are on crutches or in wheelchairs, as well as some of our staff, don't want to walk on it and have actually refused to do so because they thought they'd re-injure themselves. So, with that said, the supervisor told me that it's going to cost too much money to replace it, to break it down and to replace it. They're going to patch it up, but it won't last very long. So, that's something to consider. Personally, I would like it to be redone at this point. They also did look at the flag poles while they were out, as far as the Cabarrus County Supervisor of Facilities, and stated that it was installed incorrectly in 2002 as well. Both of them are cracking, sinking, and he said it's not a safety issue now because it's not like the Leaning Tower, but, and it's not falling over, but it is sinking and cracking. And we saw all those pictures from that. We are still in need of the forfeit chain-link fence with a gate that leads out to the new tread trail. I did get a quote from a contractor on that to let you know how much that would cost to put that in, and that would be $8,600. That was never installed in 2002 as well. We're having problems with vandalism and theft, and this has been going on a while, and probably due to the fact that we don't have security lights, cameras, or anything over by the concession stand bleacher area, which I indicated to you earlier as well. We have the poles, we have electricity. They've been up for over five years that I'm aware of, since I've lived here, but there's no lights. They had this little itty-bitty light in front of the concession stand that you could see about probably two feet ahead of you, and that's about it. I was out there last week, and I did not even know, 10 feet away from me, that there was a woman walking on our track because it's so pitch dark out there. I have a problem with the lack of security lights and camera over there because, as you're aware, we got one football field, and that's the only field we have at our school because we lack the other fields. But the vandalism is happening around the areas where there are no lights and cameras. So, I would appreciate that as well because the vandalism is continuing. In fact, a month ago, I noticed that the donated large amount of pavers I had installed by a company here locally, because I got the donated pavers. Somebody went out and actually stole the installed pavers, 13 of them, and replaced them with new ones. But why anybody would do that, I don't know. I was told possibly a teenager would do that. I don't believe that. Teenagers don't steal pavers and then install new ones. So, but I also have been told recently by a maintenance employee that there's theft going on within the maintenance department in Cabarrus County Schools. If that's true, my experience is that they need to be fired, and you don't have the option of being able to quit and get your benefits. I think you should also have criminal charges against you, as well as a police report. So, that is something that needs to be addressed. We're still waiting for some kind of shade structures and pavers. We don't have any shade at our school. That's why we started the, one of the reasons why we started the Habitat Garden area, so we could have some kind of shade. But we also are working on the other side, and I'm initiating that. But I will plan on applying for another shade, sunshade grant, and hopefully, I can get that one. But in the meantime, we need to think about that as well. We have currently a gas utility vehicle used by one of our coaches on a daily basis. The problem with that is that it's a safety issue. Somebody were to throw a cigarette next to it, it's going to blow, and then we're going to have some more problems. It currently, the last two years, had to be fixed numerous times, and I'm requesting that we get a utility carry-all vehicle that's electric and also is street legal. The cost of that is approximately $12,000, unfortunately, but that's what I was able to come up with as far as locating what, how much that would cost. We also are in major need of paving in front of our bus lot. There's just big gaps of paving missing in our bus area, and we also need restriping in front of our school as well. To my knowledge, it hasn't been done in, I don't know if it's been done since the school was built. We also have cracked and sunken sidewalks throughout our school. That just seems to be the norm at our school. The facilities manager said he went out there and he looked at them again because I requested him to do that because it's right after the handicap ramp. He said at one point, the, one little drainage that really doesn't work at all for us cracked our sidewalk. And as far as I know, and I've lived here five years, none of these things have been addressed. And none of these things were ever worked on, and they still aren't. And I'm requesting that you look into that. The other thing that I wanted to state was, I sort of feel like you take two steps up and you take 12 back. And there's sort of a state, there's a quote, and it said, "If you walked any slower, you would be standing still." And that's sort of how I feel about getting the things done at Harris Road Middle. The facilities manager told me that he's planning on retiring next year, and, but that has nothing to do with getting the things done at our school. He also indicated to me that if I wanted something done, I need to pay for it myself, and then he'll get it installed. I find this all unacceptable, and I think that we all have to work as a team to get this school up to par and to where it's workable for everybody. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Uji. Board Members, we will move to 7.1, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that we approve the corrected consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval.
May I have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. And next, we will move to our action agenda. This will move to 8.1, which is the approval of the high school magnet proposal, and we will have Mr. Jason Van Huikelum back to the podium.
Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight, we present the final proposal to open two magnet schools for the 2012 school year. A STEM program at Central Cabarrus High School, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, and an IB program at Concord High School, which is the International Baccalaureate Program. We've worked diligently in this proposal to accurately predict the full extent of the costs involved in opening these two programs, along with the potential revenue for Cabarrus County Schools that we would receive from students returning to the public school system. We believe these type of schools will sharpen our competitive edge in an increasingly competitive education marketplace. We also believe that these schools will enhance the program offerings for Cabarrus County Schools and prepare our young people for a global marketplace upon graduation. To that extent, the additions to the proposal that you've seen before are the transportation costs. You'll notice we calculated that at $626 per child. That is a high estimate and does not include subtracting the cost that it would take to transport those children regardless of where they went to school. We also included a second column under the revenue projection based on the comments from the board meeting last time, stating that we potentially were underestimating the number of students coming back to Cabarrus County Schools. So, you have two columns there. One is based on 10 students per cohort, and another column is based on 15 students per cohort for revenue projection. The leadership at Concord High School and Central Cabarrus are excited to get started on this journey. We believe that they are going to deliver a great product for Cabarrus County Schools in August 2012.
I will open the floor for discussion, and I will begin on Mr. Shu's side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jason, for bringing this to us a couple of weeks ago. We've had time to study it, and we've talked about it, and everybody's kicked it around. And this is not going to be just a little quick fix for me here, and I don't know how the other board members are going to elaborate on it, but I do want to say what I have to say, and then we can move on. And it is like I had said one time before, my main concern was the funding. And it's just like we had the young lady that came up, Mrs. Wishan, our teacher assistant representative there, as she spoke on behalf of the teacher assistants. So, I take that into consideration, which I did in the beginning anyway, you know, when we first talked about this. And then I think back to Ms. Klutz when we did our budget committee. We were talking, you know, about the budget and how we were going to do things. And we made it, we agreed that we were going to do things before people. And we did do that. Unfortunately, though, the line just kept going down with things till we got down to the people, which there, it affected the teacher assistants. And to sum up, you know, what I'm saying, you know, what I'm thinking here is the teacher assistants are very much needed. And I want to see that restored. And I guess, I'm not against the STEM and the magnet, I mean, the magnet programs. I'm not against that by no means because I fully understand the progression, the elementary to the middle, and those middle school kids got to have somewhere to go. I fully understand that. But I want this board to take in consideration, though, that, you know, we've got a lot of things out there that really need to be done. And I mean, I know even when Ms. Uji spoke about your school out at Harris Road, there's probably six or eight schools like that, Ms. Uji, just like six or eight, maybe even 10, that have lots of things that need to be done. But the funding just is not there. have lots of things that need to be done, but the funding just is not there. We've talked to the county commission about this, and they say to us, and it's pretty much a consensus, that we're probably going to have a flat budget next year, and maybe even the year after that. And so to relate that to the STEM IB program, I'm for it, I think we ought to do it, I'm just not sure that this is the right timing. Jason, well, the kids that's at J.N. Freeze now, how many do we have that's going to be progressing that we know of?
In the eighth grade class?
Right, exactly.
I want to say ninety percent had an affirmative yes, and the other ten percent were undecided. They didn't say no, but they were undecided.
What would that number, what would that number of students equate to?
It'd be about a hundred and twenty students.
A hundred and twenty eighth graders, and we're looking at ninety percent that would progress?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I want to hear what the rest of the board has to say, because I can say, I wanted to speak my piece on it, because I appreciate the teacher assistants, and I would also like to ask our teacher liaison, and her, when she gets down to you, Jenna, if you'll make a comment on behalf of the teacher assistants, if you will, not now, but when it comes down your way, if you will, okay? And that's all I have to say about it, and Ms. Manin, I guess you're up.
I feel a little bit of, at a disadvantage, because I wasn't here when all of this was discussed earlier and the budget issues came up. I'm very much in favor of the program. I do see Mr. Schu's point of view, and also, having been an ex-elementary teacher, know how important those aides are. One of the questions I have is, in the information that I have in front of me here, are there, are all of these extra costs per child over what we already get for the child, for instance, transportation, six hundred and twenty-six dollars per child? Well, that child is going to be going to some school anyway. Is that an additional cost, or is that just?
Yeah, and that's a good point, and.
I mean, it's a little hard to tell what's a, a new cost and what's a existing cost.
Exactly. That's a high estimate based on what we use to transport kids to our preschool program, which they come from all over the county, so we thought that was an accurate projection, since those, you know, in that program, they're bused from all areas of the county to one location, so we took that into account as that estimate. However, that number does not include the cost that we would already have in transporting them, and we don't have a good judgment on what that would be, so that is the highest estimate. It would be lower than that, assuming they would be transported to the regular school anyways.
All right, and for instance, the media center, the twenty-five thousand dollars, is that an extra cost because of the program?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that extra material?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess that's my question, and I'm having a little trouble.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can go through each of those.
Looking at this and knowing what are extra costs for the program, and what are just carryover costs.
All of these are pretty much extra costs, especially in the initial column. You know, these, the personnel for a coordinator is someone that we would not have normally at a traditional school. The curriculum and the training are because of the programs that are coming to the school. The science renovations are required because of the level of science that will be taking place at these high schools, and the current state of the science labs that are there right now, and then the media and the technology as well. And I also want to remind the board that the two start items, those are big-ticket items, are not included in the initial cost for that year one, the one-to-one initiative, as well as the two mobile carts. Those, if we were to parcel out line items, that would probably be the place that we'd start.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just first say, I appreciate your comments, but I'm going to give you some more things to think about. First of all, as I told Jason at the retreat, this to me was one of the best proposals we've seen in my time on the board. It was very complete, all the information we needed was there, it was very easy for me to make, come to a conclusion just at the end of the retreat that I wanted to support this. Coming back from China, and I'll give you more information next month, or in a future month, I think it is extremely important that we get that extra emphasis on higher-level instruction, have these differentiators for our district. We all like the success Cox Mill High School had with the graduation rate. These kinds of things are additional areas that improve the key kids in school, and for example, while an IB program may draw the cream of the crop, students more because of the nature of IB, STEM may help keep some kids in school who are very technology-focused, but are completely bored taking U.S. history. So there's, there's going to be different benefits for different kids, and so I think it's important that we offer those opportunities. But some things to think about, first of all, from a budget standpoint, this is not a decision between TAs and IB STEM. There's, the budget process is just beginning. We had literally hundreds of items, and Mr. Schu and Mrs. Carpenter were on the budget committee with me last year, as well as many staff members. So there, there's a tremendous amount of discussion to be had, and we had things on the list, things on the list last year that were too complicated to address in one year, that we can potentially find more things through that very, very detailed and long discussion process. So just want to make it clear, it's not a decision of TAs or IB STEM, that's not. They're both line items, along with thousands of other things. One suggestion I have about the transportation, because we've had some comments about the current STEM transportation and the long bus rides, is, and I don't know if Dr. Stain, if they've looked into this already, but having central pickup spots, not having traditional bus routes for the magnet schools, so it would mean the children need to get to the central pickup spot, but if you're looking at for high school children, that, you know, there's two schools involved here, so there's seven high schools, so there's only six other schools to get to. The kids who would go to Concord would go to Concord normally on their bus, but if there was a central pickup spot at each of the schools, and that would have to be worked logistically with timing with the special programs, that I think would help improve. It would not only improve the bus time and duration of rides for the kids, but would also hopefully reduce expenses. And so then, by parents' election to use the STEM or IB programs, their responsibility would be get the child to their neighborhood school at a certain time for the bus to go off to Concord or Central. And regarding to Mr. Schu's comment about the flat budget, and the flat budget is local, we've been able to use, over the many years, and you have a lot of years of experience on the board, the additional state funding for growth, and by all accounts, we will continue to grow to some extent. So while this local money is very important, and if the commissioners, and it's very, too early in their process to say flat for sure, but if that's what any of them are saying, and there's five of them, so it's not just one opinion, obviously, we've been very good, and our finance director, Ms. Klutz, has been very good at reusing state money. There was also an email that I sent to Mr. Kirk, Dr. Kirk, today, that I'm guessing he's going to look into regarding Race to the Top money. There are some model Race to the Top STEM high schools that are in the first wave of funding, but there's potentially some money we could tag on to there, and I don't know what, but that is focused on STEM and on these higher and special magnet school-type programs. So, you know, if it's fifty thousand dollars, that's huge to help getting one of these programs on board. And the last, the comment I wanted to make, Jason, was just, and I would say your last name, but with my cold, it's going to come out really nasal, and I'm not even going to go there tonight, but just my comments from the retreat. I want to make sure there are procedures to ensure adequate progress in each of the programs, and that kids are not moving for, because they're friends from church, for sports, for something other than the intent of the program, that they really have the academic interest at heart. And the second thing is kind of a little bit, I guess, related to that, is to have a safeguard to not remove too many students from any particular school. So for example, with Mount Pleasant's proximity, and Mount Pleasant being our smallest high school, with their proximity to Central, I don't want to see fifty kids being pulled out of Mount Pleasant, and odds are, the averages across the county are going to balance out nicely. But especially with concern with our largest schools, and also then, I'm not sure, you know, with Colton Webb, we had the situation, because it was a WACHS school and whatnot, that we created that core district around Colton Webb, and then people could apply from outside of that district, but we're not going to redistrict any high schools here. So at least I don't think that's the plan. I've not heard that at all. So just want to make sure that there's not, if you will, too many kids from Central or from Concord that would also eliminate kids from other schools. So just that there's a nice balance of safeguard there. So that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, y'all don't leave me a whole lot of room for comments, but I'll just tag on to them. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Schu's comments and understand his concerns as well, and also the other two board members, but me individually, I support both programs. I think it's a shot in the arm to both of these schools. They're both centrally located. You've got two excellent principals whose leadership is going to be outstanding and are very deserving of two programs like this. Also, I think the transportation cost will go down eventually, because these kids will drive eventually, will have their driver license, and they'll carpool, and they'll probably carpool anyway with kids from the other schools. Also, if we don't do this, then we really, we shut down J.N. Freeze or close the school to start that program for what? These kids have nothing to move to. So if we don't do it, then we were, you know, pretty blind in our decision to do what we did a few years ago. So me personally, I support it, and we need to get going.
Okay, what, okay, got quite a few questions. Number one, you said a hundred and twenty students were involved. How many's in the STEM? How many's in the IB?
I know there's more in the STEM than the IB. I want to say there's, I want to say it's probably seventy, thirty, Donna? Sixty, forty? There's more, there's more students in STEM than IB, I know that.
Okay, and the STEM program is less expensive than what the IB program is, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And probably your possibilities of getting grants are more with STEM program than it is IB program. Am I not correct in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd asked you to check on the grant that was connected to the NASA. What did you find out about that?
We've been working with a company called Research Associates. They are a professional grant-writing committee on looking into all kinds of grants. I sent them that information, they have not gotten back to me on that yet, but we're, they're going to help us look for all kinds of grants, including this Race to the Top for the Anchor STEM.
Okay, but you didn't check back with Kissel's office by any chance? They were the one that had written a letter about it, so you didn't check with them on that? And this is where I have a problem too, because one thing, I think it's very poor accounting practices to go and take salary money out of fund balance. I don't, I don't like to play that way. That's one of my biggest problems, and one thing, I am, I agree with Mr. Schu. We're sitting here wanting to jump ahead with something when we have got, you know, we, we know we're wanting to maybe look at salaries, look because we feel like we're not being able to hire people because we're not being able to pay enough, we had to cut hours, and now we're wanting to jump and do something else, and then we're wanting to take fund balance and pay salaries. That's not a good practice to do, and I've got a real problem with that. And in this personnel, you're, you're wanting to do that, and that's not a good practice to do. You don't want to take fund balance, because that's a reoccurring expense. And personally, if we were wanting to go and do something, I would rather, I'm in favor of the STEM program, because you've just told me that you've got more students in that STEM program. We've got a better possibility of being able to get a grant. I would say if we want to do something, let's, you know, wait and see if we can get some grants to do this, instead of going to our piggy bank where we're supposed to be saving money for a rainy day or extreme emergencies and wait and see what we can get. I would be in favor of doing that. I think the STEM program is, is very good, I think we should do things, but then again, we have stepped forward to do this. What have we did for, and most of the children that are in these programs are exceptional children. They are our advanced students. What have we done for our children that are not? Can someone tell me what we've done for these children?
I'll go when I get to make comments.
Well, I mean, but what have we done for these children?
You're pulling the students that are getting.
I'm sorry, but I cannot allow comments from the audience.
But, but what have we done for these children? I'm asking, I'm asking.
Yeah. Much of our budget and resources are devoted to the students who are exceptional children, to our Level Ones and Twos. We have an entire disadvantaged students fund budget that is close to a million dollars that goes to those type of resources. Title I, multimillion-dollar budget that is devoted to students who are either in poverty or at risk because of their academic performance. So, you know, I don't have the percent breakdown, obviously, on budgets, but I do know that we spend a lot of our resources on those students who are disadvantaged, who are lower-level learners, who are exceptional children, who have a special education need, that have a disability of some sort.
But, you know, I think these are, now, don't, I don't want to put word, I think these are wonderful programs, but I want to make sure that we are, get grants to support this and have the money, and not forget, as Lynn mentioned, our TAs, and our teachers haven't had wages in four years, and this is a real problem. We've got to make sure we're taking care of these things before we jump ahead and do something else, because our teachers are teaching our children. We've got to make sure we're taking care of these things before we jump and do something else, and that's where I'm coming from.
Would our teacher liaison like to make a comment about this? I'm not sure if this is the area you would like to have spoken on or not. Feel free to pass.
I was just going to say, I don't feel like it's one or the other, just like has already been said. I'm a kindergarten teacher. Would I love to see assistant TAs get their hours back? Absolutely, but this isn't, it's not one or the other, and if we don't finish something we've started, then we're not competing for our kids. So I don't feel like, I don't, I don't know what else to say than that. I just, if it was get TAs back at eight hours or do this, it'd be a total different game, but that's not what we're talking about, and sometimes there's money that can only be used on things like this that can't save our TAs, like Race to the Top, you know, it couldn't save TAs, but it can go, you know, for technology and things like that. So of course, I will always be advocate for the TAs as a kindergarten teacher and fight for them, and I expressed that in the budget committee, but this isn't very important, and I feel like we have to compete as a county to be the best we can be, or we'll lose kids, and then we'll, you know, be fighting a different fight.
Thank you very much. So I would like to cover some of these comments, Jason, if you'll just bear with me, because I made some notes. Number one, you're right, we do have to compete, and we, Carolyn, to address yours, we are mandated by law, from the federal to the state, down to the local, of what we have to do for at-risk kids. We have more mandates and more programs that address disadvantaged students than we could probably even think of off the top of our head. We do not have programs available for academically successful kids that need to be pushed so that they compete at that college level. Colleges are becoming very competitive, and they're starting to do this point system where whatever you have in that college or the high school level gives you a, you know, a jump up over students that do not, and we've got to recognize that. That was our whole point of initiating this conversation, that we knew that it was going to be less expensive to start this, and it's most appropriate to start it at the elementary and the middle school, but we knew where we were going with this. There's no reason to have those at that level if we're not going to continue to the high school, because that's where it makes the difference. Those kids start all over when they begin ninth grade. They're kind of wiped clean in the eighth grade. They've got the foundation, the basis, the educational portion of these programs, but their slates are wiped clean. They start all over again at ninth grade, where it really counts is in the high school level that counts for college. So for us not to do that puts those students that put all that time and effort into it, not going to the charter school and remaining with us at a disadvantage. That is the point. The real important part is, we need to, we need to learn as board members that we can't cross over pots of money, and Kelly, I'm not going to call you to the podium, but we need to learn, we cannot cross over pots of money. Facilities, structural, we have pots of money that we can't interchange for programs and CNI programs. That, that's very important, that we, we all as board members need to be on board of, when we're talking, that we don't confuse the general public of saying Harris Road Middle School is not going to get their facilities because we're going to put a STEM program in. We don't do that. That's not how the budget committee works, that's not how our budget works, that's not how we get our pots of money. It is very important that the, to understand that the money follows these kids with, to the charter schools, so we're losing that money whether we get on board with it or not, but we write those checks every month for those kids to go to those charter schools. To get those kids back is only an advantage to us to be able to have extra revenue to take care of salaries for teachers, to add teachers, to add teachers' assistance. Those are the pots of monies that we could. to add teachers' assistance. Those are the pots of monies that we could, can actually work with. To say that we're impacting negatively teachers and teachers' assistance by doing that is almost an oxymoron to me because the only, the only way to get those kids back is to offer them something to bring the kids back for. Parents are not going to allow them to start with us in the elementary and the middle school and not move them on to a charter school because that's where they're going to get their high school portion of it that counts. That's the only portion that does count for their college credits. So it's extremely important that we understand that the high school level was the most important portion of this, which is what our goal was. If we wait till we have the money, how long have we been waiting? I've been on the boards since 2004. We're still battling. We're still having deductions. We're still dealing with cuts. But we've been able to implement, as Ms. Burtonbaugh stated, with the extra revenue that comes from the state to do some things that we need to get done. And that's how we'll, we will deal with this. Salaries will not be pulled out of fund balance every year. That would be a one-time event, hopefully. We've had an overwhelming response from parents. We had no idea when we stepped out and took this chance at the elementary, middle school level how successful or not that was going to be. And it's been overwhelmingly successful. Parents have spoke very loudly how, how excited they have been about that program and what's offered for those kids at that level. I cannot understand why this board would not move forward, knowing that we took a chance, we were rewarded for it. We need to take another chance and, and make sure that our high school level kids where this is the most important are taken care of. Otherwise, we took a chance for nothing, as Mr. Fur stated. So we need to listen. We're always told we should not micromanage. We've had our cabinet-level people and our curriculum and instruction people tell us that this, this is extremely important, that we take this step forward so that it actually impacts our high school level students, which is, was the goal to begin with. And they've made the recommendations. Central Cabarrus High School and Concord High School, those are two schools that need, as we've stated, a shot in the arm. That, that's the primary thing. A lot of our high schools have their own specialty programs. We've talked about the program with the NASA. There's nowhere else to put that but out at Central because of the special program, the Planetarium, that they have out there. Concord High School needs a shot in the arm. It's a centrally located high school. There's reasons why these schools were selected and, and we all should realize as board members how important that was. So with that being said, are there any additional comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I would just like to change your word of taking a chance to saying this is a very calculated and well thought out risk.
I like it.
So, and when you're ready for motion, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Schu?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, all of the talks that I've talked about, I'm not against the program. I never have been against it. And I think you understand that, Jason. Madam Chair, everything you said, I applaud you because you was 100% right. But as a board member and as a Budget Committee member, I want us to take a little deeper look. We're in the budget process now. I want us to take a deeper look. And if we have to find some more things, find some more things. But I think now, as I look back, reducing the teacher assistance from eight hours to six hours, I think we might have made a mistake there, a long-term mistake, that we'll see as, I think, the teacher liaison or the teacher that spoke. But I, I just feel like that we'll see the results of what we did this year and the years to come with the test results and that kind of thing. But anyway, you know, I'm with Ms. Burtonbaugh. You know, I have no problem. I'm going to vote for it. But I want us to be more concerned about things. I mean, getting rid of some of the things that we love to enjoy or whatever, to try to get these people back where they can, where they need to be and, and where the money goes to the classroom. And as far as the IB STEM, hey, let's go for it. And also, I want to mention this, Ms. Blackwelder. If you remember, I was absent for two years during the planning, this planning of the elementary and the, and the middle STEM and IB programs. I was absent during that time and so was Ms. Monnet. And so we are at a disadvantage about what the plans were then. So we had to pick up when this new stuff come on here just a couple of months ago. So we had to pick up the pieces where we left off because we wasn't here. But anyway, I'm good to go with it and whoever makes the motion, I'd be glad to second it. No problem.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the high school magnet proposal to place a STEM magnet at Central Cabarrus High School and to place an IB magnet at Concord High School be approved as presented.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second.
Could I make one comment?
Yes.
That you go after grants before you take it out of fund balance. With that exception, I will go along with it.
Yes, ma'am.
We will be glad to put that on record. Would you like to say you would like that noted in the record or?
Want that noted in the record.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, bear with me because with all that, I've gotten out of order. So hang on just one second. Next, we will have our 8.2. This is the approval of the bid awards for Concord High School Dining Room Edition and Auditorium Renovations with Mr. Lynn Wiki. And with that, I would like to make the noted correction, correction that the salary study that was pulled from the consent agenda will be noted as 8.3. Board members, are you there? And if you will, while we're waiting on Mr. Wiki, if we could give the cameraman just a few minutes to change their film. Ready? Okay. Mr. Wiki, I'm getting a sign from the cameraman. You are ready.
I just canceled out of what I was in, so I'm going back to him. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and board members, I, I would ask you to go to the bid tabulation sheet, which is the attachment. And I would suggest going to the bottom of the screen and hitting the plus button twice. It'll bring it up to a size, hopefully, maybe three times, so you can read it all. But in bidding the work at Concord High School, most recently, for the dining room expansion and the auditorium renovations, we had a significant amount of bidding activity, which was great. Unfortunately, the bids came in higher than originally anticipated. The good news is that even with that occurrence, GW Lyles Construction's bid of $705,000, and I'll explain that in a moment, is a bid that we can accept. If you look at WG Lyles, excuse me, GW Lyles Construction, that's the third company in from the left, that column, their base bid, combination of, of the dining room and the auditorium was $703,800. Alternate 2 is for Medico locks, which is a lock standard that we use throughout the county school system. So we would accept alternate 2, which was $1,200. The other alternates, alternate 5 and 6, are, I believe, respectively for the deduction of a skylight and sound, skylight from the dining room area and sound panels, excuse me, from the acoustical sound panels from the auditorium space. Both of those alternates, which amount, in the case of their bid, to almost $21,000, are not something that I would recommend the board to consider. And I'll tell you, the reasons are fairly straightforward. Right now, if you've been to the dining room, you'll know that they have exterior and natural lighting, daylighting into that space. We are taking over that area that is now daylit and enclosing it. And I believe that would become a very, very dark and dank place without natural light. And there is no other way to get the natural light in. So my strong recommendation is to maintain the skylight in the, in the new addition. In terms of the auditorium, I think it goes without saying that you need a certain degree of sound attenuation in an auditorium so that you don't have reverberation. That nullifies what's being presented. So it's extremely important. Those are numbers that we asked the architect to look at. We wanted to see what those costs were. But honestly, in the scheme of things, I strongly recommend that we, that we do not take those alternates and we accept the low bid of $705,800 from GW Lyles Company. The monies that are over budget, we will take from other contract, other projects within that school's program, with the idea that ultimately, if we have funds at the end of the QSCB projects, as we've talked about before, we will go back and fund as many of those projects that we've placed on hold as we can. But these projects are so important to the operation of that high school. I hope that the board would agree with me to accept the price and move forward on these projects.
Okay. Lynn, I have a question before I move to the other board members.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I did hear you say that you said, we, your recommendation was not to accept alternate number 5.
Number 5 or number 6.
Okay, let me ask you.
These were deductive alternates. In other words, they, they were taking it all to the project.
Right. My question is, I had a phone call regarding the auditorium acoustical panels, that that is a real important part of that auditorium and that that may affect the sound system and how, you know, operational that is. As far as, I think there were some problems out at Concord Middle School. They'd had some issues with that. Did anyone give any feedback regarding or that knew that that was going to be deducted from that? Was there any feedback that came from the people that would actually be dealing with that auditorium and the sound systems? He said, he said too deducted.
No.
No.
I'm sorry. Did you say to take them?
No, I, no, that, correct.
Not to, okay. I was, I was trying to get, I got you. Double negative.
It's a little confusing because they're deductive change orders. Normally, we see them as additive.
So we're going to keep them?
We're going to. That's my recommendation.
To keep both, alternate 5 and 6?
Yes.
Well, I just said all that for nothing. Great. Okay. Yeah, that's okay. That's good.
At least it's clarified. I appreciate that.
It's clarified. You know, I just came in late last night. So I was reading this and I thought, oh, this is not good. When I got the phone call, they had said no one had asked them. So I wanted to make sure. So your recommendation is to keep both of those alternates. Okay, I am good. So therefore, I'll open up the floor for discussion for additional comments or questions. And Ms. Carpenter, do you have anything?
What did you say the total would be then?
The total would be 700, well, let me take you back to the addition. It's, it's the base bid total of $703,800 and then alternate number 2, which is an additional $1,200. So the total bid accepted price of this work would be $705,000 even.
Okay, okay, I got you. Why is it some of them charged for it and some of them didn't? And that's kind of threw me off because you go across here and you had 1, 2, 3, 4, I know, 1, 2, 3, 3 of them that didn't charge for it. 1, 2. And that's why, what is it? Just to toss up whether they charged for it or they didn't charge for it?
Right. In other words, some contractors look at that price and they feel that it's not significant enough to, to offer it as a cost. Others may deal with Medico on a much larger basis than other contractors and so they don't face that same sort of charge.
Oh, okay. All right. That was my only question.
Mr. Fur? Ms. Burtonbaugh? Ms. Monnet?
I've spoken to several people about the acoustical panels and, and I know how long Concord High has not had a decent place for their arts program to perform. And so I'm delighted that, I think it looks like, or I hope the board is going to accept this.
Mr. Schu? Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
So moved and could tell them to hurry up and get it done quick.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to read this just for logistics of our board meeting. That the board award a single contract for both projects at Concord High School, which is the dining room addition and auditorium renovations to GW Lyles Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $705,000. Further, the board approves the use of the construction funds allocated for the vocational building renovations at CHS Concord High School in the amount of $135,240 to cover the additional cost over budget. May I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I meant to note that I'm thrilled not only that that's going to be done, but that this is a local company and we are employing Cabarrus County people.
Yes, ma'am.
Very well stated. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wiki.
You're welcome.
And next, we will move to our pooled consent agenda item, which is 8.3. And this is the salary study. And before I open the floor for discussion, since we actually did discuss this at the work session, I know there's been some discussion since then, I want to make a couple of points, just for the general public that's listening and for those of you that are here tonight. And each one of you will be given an opportunity to make statements or comments as well. But I want to, I want to state, just in a chronological order fashion, of why we are looking at this and, and what has brought us to this point, or a recap. There has not been a salary study done for Cabarrus County Schools since 1994. So if you divide that $43,000 salary study by that number of years, that becomes very insignificant. It is so important of a study to most entities that the commission and the city do it every two years and some of them every year. They all initiated their studies with an outside consultant firm to begin with and then took it internal when they were given a format and a process to work with that they were able to follow. But they all started there. I'm not sure what those costs initially were, but I'm sure we could get that at some point in time. There's been some talk out there that this is only discussing teachers. This is not. This encompasses every department and every employee and we have almost 4,000. So this is a very in-depth and time-consuming process. I also want you to understand that this is good information for the Budget Committee. This is what we've talked about, that no one wants, Ms. Burtonbaugh, Mr. Schu, Ms. Carpenter, you all sit on that Budget Committee and how many times do you ask for backup documentation? You want the facts. You don't want opinions. This is where you get into when you do internal audits or studies. They can't help but to become biased and opinionated. It's very hard because we have different areas in our district that there's not that such person in another district. Or we have a, just a little bit of a different operation. It's going to be very hard for them to take that and use comps from other districts, which is what we were showed and what you were sent today. But it's also good information not to show us where we're short. And yes, we are much very well aware of where we're short with teachers and supplements and, and local persons that we're, it's talked about every year from the federal to the state, down to the local. We understand that portion of it. But the information that I was looking for and hope to attain from this is where are we good? Some of the entities that have done these studies have figured out that there are areas that they, there are areas where they're well compensated or they meet or exceed compensation across the districts. That is extremely important information. So that's part of what was important to me. I do not want anybody to take this wrong. I know this is not going to come out in a good way, no matter how I say it. Ms. Algar, I apologize ahead of time. But I feel like our human resources department is not equipped. They're not staffed and they don't carry some of the expertise to cover the vast majority of employees that we have. This is not just teachers. It's not just educators. You know, this is facility operators. It's HVAC people. It's plumbers. It's mechanics. It's custodians. It's people that, the whole pig picture is what makes our system function. So this is not just addressing teachers and TAs. And I think we've gotten away from that focus of why we're doing this study. This will give us positions. It's a non-biased opinion of what job descriptions should look like. You know, when you get into writing job descriptions, that is a very technical part of what we do. That's their expertise. That's part of it that we want to see. If our job descriptions are positively reflecting what our people can do, should do, would be doing. So it's extremely important that we get validated of what our people are out there doing or what could be done or if there are situations where we need to rewrite descriptions. That's part of their expertise. Internal studies, as much as I will look forward to us being able to absorb that after the fact and we get a format and a process that human resources can move forward with that they feel comfortable with, and I hate to say this, but it is still an opinionated, biased study. They can't help but to do that. That's the way that's going to turn out. I've been a part, part of audits and, and consultant firms with medical offices and all you're doing here is changing industries. It's very hard to cross over when there's such a vast number of employees, 4,000. I'm not sure that we could expect our human resources department to take pieces and parts of that and do it themselves and get real good, accurate information, which is what we always charge them with. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you move forward with your discussion comments. And keep in mind that the reason why we did this to begin with is because this Budget Committee has a huge charge before the next year. We have stated that 2011 and 2012 are going to be our hardest year. So the more facts and the more documentation and the more hard numbers that we have to move forward with gives you a bigger, better picture to move forward with salaries and where we are at. So with that being said, I'll start the discussion and I'm actually going to move forward to my left and I'll start with Ms. Burtonbaugh and move down the line and start back with Ms. Carpenter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I wasn't at the work session because of my, my trip. So I don't know what all was said, but I just want to kind of share my thoughts on this. I personally have, have participated in salary studies as one of the contributors over the years and I guess I- years, and I guess I see, even if the data has not changed outcomes, for me personally, as an individual receiver of salary for my company, I like seeing the data, because it gives me a target. With what I could expect, sometimes it has reset my expectations. So, I agree that it needs to be reviewed, and I think that was the proposal, a review of all positions. I'll reiterate, I think it could be valuable for the budget committee priorities. In particular, what I'm interested in seeing is to identify the level of gaps in different positions. So, for example, a 3% gap on a higher-paid position, to me, is, there may be an equivalent dollar amount that's greater, but a 3% gap at a higher position is not as important to me as a board member, as a 10% gap at a lower position. Some years ago, and Ms. Minnet, Mr. Schu, you guys will remember this for sure, because it was during the, I'll say, the better budget years on the board, before we hit around 2003, 2004, where we had three-to-five-year phase-in plans. We used to have this wish list of things that we were going to do, and we were all excited as the board members when we could pick from that wish list, remember that? We had the, and I think, was it three- or five-year phase-in plan for the teacher supplements? And we were going to get them up to a certain point compared against our neighbors in Charlotte Mecklenburg. Because keep in mind with teacher salaries, and honestly, most of the state positions, we can't affect what the state pays. The fact that the state has not given raises to state employees, we can't solve that from our local board. We can affect supplements, and we could affect some things in a small way, but it's really hard when you start multiplying out every teacher in full salary. So, our focus in teachers, for example, is really on supplements. So, we had that phase in, and we got pretty much, I think, down that path. Unfortunately, CMS was raising their supplements faster than we were catching up. So, we never met our percentage goal, but we were giving increases over a couple of different years. That's the kind of thing I would like to see get back into the budget, not huge increases, not across-the-board increases, but where we have, whatever from the results of the survey would identify gaps, that would be high percentages, to me, that would be our, could give us kind of a layout, our target for budget committees on what would be appropriate. I think doing, even though we don't have a lot of money to do anything, I think we need to get that plan together, we need to figure out what we have. And for example, it is well-known that our equivalent positions in our district are paid less than county employees. So, yes, we have to go to the county commissioners, but I think if we go with facts, not kind of speculation, and say, here's where we are, even your county employees are making X percent in equivalent, non-certified positions, and technology is one big one, I know, that has been looked at over the years, different times. I think the county, the commissioners will understand that, they'll understand if we have the data, and while they may not be able to help a lot, perhaps that can be an area that we can focus on. So, just in summary, review all positions, I think it's good for the budget committee, I think the independence, as Mrs. Blackwolder said, is good. I like it coming from the outside, in fact, I don't participate in salary surveys that are really internal. I like to participate in the ones that are by my professional organizations and whatnot, because I feel like they're more cross-sectional and unbiased. I worry that an internal salary view might be influenced by perceived value of positions, depending on who's doing the data and whatnot, so I wouldn't, I think external covers everybody across the board. And I'd like to see us, from the budget standpoint, get back into that. We can't solve everything in a year, or even in two years, but get back into that three-to-five-year plan mode, so.
Ms. Minnet?
I'm definitely in favor of an external salary study. You have a built-in bias when you do it internally, and all kinds of problems with the opinions about the results. So, I definitely think it should be external, and it should, you know, look at the, not only Charlotte Mecklenburg system, which we're constantly talking about, but all the systems that are similar to us. And we have to be cognizant in this economic times, that we're not going to be able to do instantly, build instantly to equity with everyone. But we need to have the numbers to go by, and the comparisons to go by, in order for the budget committee and for the board as a whole to plan ahead. As Cindy said, we were living in la-la land, as I think 99% of the American public was doing several years ago, when we thought that everything was wonderful, was always going to be better, and now we've hit a wall, not only in the public sector, but in the private sector. And I, having quite a foot in the private sector, I also hope that the system understands that it's the private sector that's pretty much funding the public sector, not that the public doesn't pay its share of taxes, but you really need to be looking at that comparison, and making sure that the positions in the school system are equitable with the ones that are being paid in the private, and see if those are in balance. So, I'm very much in favor of this project.
Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's like a two-edged sword, really, you know, because when we talked about this initially, I think the reason we put it on the consent agenda was because we felt like, yep, that's really the way to go. And as we had a little more time to study over it, think about it, talk amongst ourselves and everything, Ms. Carpenter, I don't want to steal your thunder, I'll let you say what you have to say about this when it comes your turn. But, you know, we already know, we already know, I mean, there's nobody that works for the school system that doesn't already know that we, it's been four years since we've had an increase. And a lot happens in four years, and obviously, maybe the surrounding areas have, and even in the private sector, have had increases and that type thing, and we haven't had that in Cabarrus County schools. So, there's no question about the need, the need is there, everybody is common knowledge, everybody knows that. But my real concern was, you know, we've already, because of the lack of increases, the morale, it's been said widely, that the morale is low. And, you know, when you hear things that, yeah, you know, we're not being paid like we need to be, we need to be paid more, that's one thing, you know, that'll bring the morale down, there's no doubt. But when you spend money to get a professional opinion, to come in and tell you what you already knew, you spend $43,000, or whatever we finally end up with, for a company that is non-biased, to tell us basically what we already know, that we need to have an increase for our people, well, you know, that's good and well. And Ms. Blackwolder, with all due respect, and I appreciate your comments, and I applaud yours and Ms. Furtinbaugh, but also, need to take into consideration this, is that the way I was looking at it, is that it's one thing to hear it, but it's another thing to see it on paper, you saying, well, wait a minute, you know, I'm 10%, or I'm 12% under. And in some cases, I might even be 5% or 10% over what the average is, so that could give and take, that kind of thing. But I was thinking that morale could go from low to possibly lower, and you may even see people leaving, simply because they know now, this on paper, that there's people across the street or across the county making 10% or 12% or whatever the percentage is, than they are here. And so, it could actually be a situation where it wouldn't work in our favor. And then, another thing, and then I'll hush on this, and we'll pass it on down that end, and that is, you know, I've talked with, you know, one of the commissioners, and matter of fact, I have what he had to say here, and if the Madam Chair would permit me, I would play what the commissioner said about funding. And so, what good is it going to do us, other than prove what we already know? We're going to, we know where we are, but how are we going to get there without funding? And according to what, you know, I've heard, there will not be any more funding, and as like Ms. Furtinbaugh said earlier, about state funds and that kind of thing, sure, we'll get that, but, you know, I just really and truly just, I can't see spending the money right now to do it, because of the impact that it would have across the board. And if you would permit me, I would play that recording from Chris Meesmer, he said it would be fine.
I'm going to deny that request, only because I feel Mr. Meesmer, or any individual Board of Commission person could not speak for the board, I think Ms. Minnet would agree with that. That, I think, would put, place him in a very hard predicament, I don't think that's good for him, it's not good for us.
Well, what I'm saying is, when he told me, and it's on here, he said that I would welcome you to tell the other board members exactly who said this and where it came from, and rather than it being hearsay, me saying to you what they said, I was giving you first chance to hear it. That's fine, no problem.
And you know, if they would like to individually have conversations, I think that's fine, but one, as you know, I don't think any of us would appreciate one of our statements being stated, that we are speaking for our board, that wouldn't be quite appropriate. So, my thought is, he can't really speak for the Board of Commissioners.
No, no, he can't.
That's actually the board chair's responsibility, and if the commissioners' chairperson would like to get on record for that, then that's fine. But there's going to be a lot of things that's going to change between now and then, there may be a lot of mindsets that change between now and then, so I would really hate to put him on the spot, that he's made a statement in November, that he may need to retract or rethink by the time we get there in May. So, I'm going to deny that request, only because I don't feel like that's fair to their commission, I don't know that he got permission from them to do that, and that think that might be a little bit of a contingent issue. But at the bottom line, as, there's maybe a lot of changes that he will, have wished he hadn't done that by the time we get there to May. One of the, I would like to, before I move on down the line, in speaking to that, the report that goes to the county commission, we are always asked to quantify. We have never been able to quantify our request. We always say, we're not competitive, we're not being able to retain the numbers we would like to. This is our ability to quantify a report to them, that means a lot. It would be, to me, if I were on the other side, to continuously hear, we're not competitive, we're not able to retain, we're, we know that our employees are not paid at the same rate that we think they should be, we've had cuts, we've not been able to increase supplements, we've all heard it, we know it, we can say it verbatim. But to put that, to quantify that, and to give that to them in a report fashion, along with our budget meetings that we have with them in May, when we present to them, I just think makes that, that validates what we said in a beneficial, hard fact, black and white factor. This also gives us where we are, we do know where we are in a lot of cases, but we do not know where we are in a lot of cases. We have too many employees, there's not one board member on here that would be able to state, does our administration, does our cabinet level, are the facilities department, are they all on track? There's not one of us that would be able to say, yes, one way or the other, there's just not. The only way to figure that out is to do a neutral, outsourced study. It tells us where we are and where we need to go, I made the statement, I know that Jessica stated it in the paper, I got a lot of good feedback from that, that, you know, it does give us a basis to start from, it gives us an idea of where we are and where we need to go. Yes, we're probably not going to be able to do a whole lot with that, but we knew that before we got started, we would know that if we don't do the study. It sets the groundwork for future budgets with commissions, so that they get a better idea. You know, I was going to offer that we have a combined meeting, that once we actually complete the study, if it's not ready, because this is a time-consuming event, this is not going to happen in just a couple of days, we've recognized that, they've all stated this is a four-to-five-month process, we have almost 4,000 employees, there'll be a lot of information looked at, it's going to be presented by the budget committee, y'all know what type of work has been placed into that, it's going to go back and forth, this is not going to be done in a short period of time. So, my thought is, if we don't do it now, we might as well not do it until another year. And like I said, if, yes, you're saying that the morale is low in a lot of areas, but it's a low in a lot of different areas in our county. I would hope that our employees would hear us saying, we are putting this, we feel like it's important, because we are trying to prioritize where we are with salaries and where we need to be, and that we are looking at, and to me, that would mean that us having the discussion should make them feel better that we have recognized that it's important to us. As I stated, you know, the other two entities, the commission and the city of Concord, think it's so important for their employees, they do it every two years and some every year, we've not done this since 1994. I think that made a louder statement than any statement we could have said to employees. So, to me, my thought is, it does set the groundwork for the future, no, we're probably not going to be able to address it immediately, but our budget doesn't start till next year anyway. So, when we present to the commission in May, June, that's several months from now, for them to understand just really where we are and what those facts are, that'll come through our budget committee process, which is what we started the budget committee to begin with. So, with that, I'm going to move down to Mr. Furr, and then move on to Ms. Carpenter.
I really don't know what more could be said, but I'm going to say it. You know, with respect to each one of you, you know, I've been on the board now for three years, and all of you guys have been on this board longer than myself, and as always, I appreciate and value your comments, and everything that you guys have said tonight, are, you know, they're right on cue. With that said, I guess you said it was 1994 since we've done a salary survey, and as Ms. Furtinbaugh said, in better budget years, why didn't y'all do this? Is my question. I mean, to me, this should have already been done, we shouldn't be doing it in bad budget times. I mean, since it's been 1994, since 1994, we've had a lot of good budget years, so that's quite some time to pass by, but I think the previous boards probably should have already looked at this. And, I mean, nothing not to throw y'all under the bus or nothing, but, but, you know, you kind of get my drift, to me, we're doing it at a bad time. Does it need to be done? Absolutely. You know, I've said, since I've been on this board, you know, my goal in my four years is somehow, with whatever means I've got, is to get these people, especially these teachers, pay raises. I know we can't, and, you know, as you, once you get on the board, you understand, you don't have a whole lot of control over things like that. But that's one of the things that's dear to me, I want to see that happen before I leave. But, you know, we come into this thing, I was sitting here with my mind made up, then you changed it, then Cindy changed it, Ms. Minnet changed it, Lynn changed it. So, like I said, I value your opinions, but I would like to do this, but I don't want to do it right now. I mean, you know, we're stating the obvious, and I just don't see spending forty-some-thousand dollars on this, at this point. In good times, absolutely, but right now, I just can't agree with it.
Well, I'm with you. Why wasn't it done before, '94? That is quite a time, that was before my time, that's B.C., before Carol. And so, and one of the things morale is, and like I say, when you see it in black and white and put it right in front of your face, it makes you feel even worse. And what gets me, when this study's done, if you find out somebody is 10% or 15% above, are you going to go back and take their money away from them? Are you? Has anybody answered that question?
One of the reasons you want an objective study is to have recommendations for each employee, so I doubt they would decrease anybody's salary, however.
So, you're saying that will happen?
They may have some overall recommendations.
But, but that's not going to happen if...
They may move one group more quickly than another group. For instance, if you have a certain amount of money to place in one place, it would not be with that particular set of employees, it would be with a set of employees that are below salary, and the market, for instance, like a 10% or 15%, 20%, 30% below market.
But, you know, and we know, starting out with this, they're not going to be able to do something. It'd be different, I'd jump up and down for Joy, and I'd probably walk, walk her out there to go ahead and say, do it, if I knew we could do something about it. But we know that we're going into this, and we're not going to be able to do anything with it once we get it done. So, that's where my whole problem is. If I knew I could do something about it once it was done, and be able to do even one or two departments with something, I would say, go right ahead. But right now, we're in, we don't really have, I mean, I would rather do something else with that $43,000, and number two, we know we're not going to be able to do anything with it, once we, I mean, once we get it, we know we're, we would not be able to do anything to actually do any bumps or do anything with it, and that's kind of where I stand with it. You know, if I knew I'd be able to do something, once I got the information, then I could be, say, hey, yeah, but that's where I stand with it.
Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd just like to address, since Mr. Furr sometimes calls me the elder on the board, but I think Mrs. Minnet has more total years than I do, so.
No, you can take elder.
Well, I'm looking at total years, not age of birth, or date of birth, but from the past, until about 2002, 2003, and Kelly, you probably know what year it was, I'm thinking it was around 2002, where the state started the reversion process, maybe 2003. So, from that, from that time, we were on a progressive path of increasing supplements, adding AG teachers, that's when we added resource officers, position... adding AG teachers, that's when we added resource officers, positions, nurses, that's when we were adding things, and we were diluting, decreasing class size. So we were approaching, if you will, salary adjustments in different ways, whether directly through supplements or by better working conditions and so on. Because when you do salary surveys, and the reasons people leave an organization, it's not just salary, a lot of times it has to do with working conditions as well. So we were putting money into all those areas. A lot of the salary, and there were salary surveys done, but they were more targeted on certain roles, for example, teacher supplements in adjacent counties and similar-sized districts. So we might have had a report on 12 different districts that showed us supplements. I know over the years, and Mr. Shi and Ms. Minnott, you probably remember those, you know, we would see this. So, but we have not had that full district look. And so like I said, I just wanted to defend that we were not errant boards, at least in my opinion, but we were approaching it in different ways. I think right now, we have had a loss of significant positions, both in teachers, we had several award-winning teachers leave from one high school this past year, and they sent us a very eloquent letter, actually two letters, explaining, not at all blasting us, understanding budget was tight, but they had chosen to go into other professions because for their family's sake and the age of their children and so on. We've lost perhaps our most experienced technology person because he chose to go to private industry. And not that we can meet every goal, but we have, we just lost a child nutrition manager for higher pay elsewhere. So not that we can meet every goal, but I firmly believe that we are going to see, and we are going to perhaps reset expectations, and you all well know that my company reset our financial expectations three years ago, had nothing to do with the market, I should say, the individual performance job market, it had to do with the company's total funding. So coming from that position and having lived through the reset expectations, I don't imply that we're going to change any salaries for anyone, but what was awakened in me through experiencing that with my coworkers and whatnot, was that some people were being paid right at market. They thought they were much more valuable, but when they saw that what the company had decided to do with pay grades and whatnot, you become very grateful for where you are because the market, the salary survey said, we were being paid at the fair market value. I fully believe we're going to see, and I'm going to use a TA example here, so forgive me, I'm not going to give real numbers necessarily, but if we are a dollar low on a TA salary, that is an hour, that is a whole lot different than being $2,000 or $3,000 low on an administrator at a school level or at the county office, on an annual basis. That's a very different equation. I think we need that information to make informed decisions. So having personally experienced this, I know the value. I think you don't have to like the medicine you're given, but you swallow it and you say, okay, I understand better, the grass is not greener in CMS or in Union County or wherever, I'm happy to work here, and I believe that board is informed now and they're going to make decisions, so.
Ms. Augur, would you like to make any other statements?
I would. First, I just want to say how much I appreciate and respect the opinion of every board member, and enjoy working with each of you very much regardless of the outcome. I would like to say that I think you are right, that we do have people who realize that they are being underpaid. I know we have a lot of concern about what that will do to the morale, but I will tell you that I think just extending ourselves to say, we're going to look at this, and we're going to have a plan in the event that we do get some money, means a lot to people. I can share with you that I've had phone calls in the last few weeks from people, I've had principals call about assistant principal salaries, I've had people on the cabinet email me about salaries of people in their individual departments, and when they hear that we are at least looking at a salary study, while that might not solve it immediately, they know that the possibility is there that at least we understand the situation, that we're willing to take a look at the situation, and that we won't be directionless if we do have the ability to put even a small amount of money toward this. And we talked about objectivity. You know, I do want to say, we've had a long-term technology vacancy, and Ms. Furtinbaugh referred to that tonight. But I want to say, when we begin to need to address certain positions so that we won't have critical operational damage to our school system, that to have a plan to follow, well, people will respect that.
Dr. Shepherd.
I think Ms. Augur, what she said is exactly what we need to listen to, and that is that, yes, it should have been done long ago, but we need this to base decision-making today because we do have numerous requests for additional compensation. And the only thing we have to base this on now is simply our opinion. And I don't think this is a difficult decision, certainly not a difficult recommendation for me to make to you, $43,000 in order to have something that is objective, that is unbiased, to make these recommendations is very clear, and I would strongly encourage you to move forward with this study so that we'll have something to base these decisions on.
Before I entertain a motion, I'm hearing that we may be split on this. And for the first time, I think, since I've been on the board, we may possibly have a tie to take this to a motion. If I feel like we have that, I would like to table this into December, so that gives Board Member Kiger an opportunity to state his opinion and then place it on the action agenda for December. If I feel like that we're not going to be able to move forward and it's going to be a tie, we really don't have a choice. Is there anyone that was in the negative that feels like they can change their mind or has heard enough information to feel like it's worthy of moving forward? I think you just gave me my answer. I would entertain a motion to table this discussion into the work session in December. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. And with that, I would like to have a motion at the board convening close session pursuant to General Statute 143-3, 1811 A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee in pursuit to General Statute 143-3, 1811 A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, and we would like to say goodnight to the viewing audience, and we will see you at our December meeting.